I'll make the motion to be executed executive session.
I'll second that.
If you favor an exit of the executive session, say aye. I do not oppose like some.
Okay, your certification. I live to certify that to the best of our knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion to go into executive session were heard, discussed, or considered in executive session. The codes we were in executive session under was 2.2-3711-81 personnel and 2.2-3711-88 consultation with the legal counsel in general.
May I, Ms. Thompson? Recall the vote?
Mr. Zack Leiter?
Yes.
Mr. Bossner?
Yes.
Ms. Compton?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Yes. And if we stand for a pledge of allegiance, would that be one of your needs, please?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the least of the... We will live being just as well.
Would anybody like to address the board's decision?
Power of the Lord, it's a prayer. How many God, we thank you heavenly father for the opportunity once again to be out and doing the county's business and we just thank you for those involved in the school system and their desire to serve. We celebrate these valedictorians tonight and ask that you bless their future as they go on and live out the talents that you have given them and the others as being honored tonight, we thank you for their talents and dedication and heavenly father, just give this board the wisdom of Solomon to lead the county according to your will and we thank you for everything in Christ's name we commit.
Thank you, Ms. Curry.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Penny Kite with Valhalla Health. We're at the University of North Dakota Hospital. And we're here because we want to talk about a new service that we're offering to the schools in the upcoming school year and it's school-based telemedicine. What it is is if your child gets sick...
Just turn over to the mic.
If your child gets sick and comes to the nurse's office, what we'll do is we can connect them virtually to the urgent care and complete a virtual urgent care visit. What we also offer is not just an audio video connection, we offer point of care testing, which is strep, flu, COVID tests if the school's needed. And those, we have standing orders with their provider for our medical director for that. We also include in the device setup an otoscope so you can actually look in the child's ear and the provider on the other end can see what's in the child's ear. They also have a stethoscope in order to hear the heartbeat if there's any respiratory sounds, any respiratory issues, and then also a general exam cam. So it's a little more than just kind of a FaceTime kind of video, it's got the peripherals in order to really diagnose. What we're trying to do is get that virtual urgent care as quickly with the child or the staff because it'll be for children or staff as possible. And then what would happen is that provider would at that point diagnose and then if you need an antibiotic or that antibiotic will be called in to the pharmacy of choice for the student and the parent. And then by the time the parent comes and picks up that child to take him home, they've also got the antibiotic. The other thing is too, on this virtual visit, when the parent completes the consent form, it's for the entire school year, they can offer to take that consent form away at any point if they want. And then with that consent form, if the parent is at work and they want to be a part of that visit, we can connect that parent into that visit too. So at no point, at any point that parent can be involved in any part of that. And so we plan to go into this relationship with you all and hopefully offer you an added service here in Russell County. And then we're also in discussions at some point, we're trying to get some providers so that we can also offer other services such as telebehavioral and so forth as needed.
And as we understand, there's no cost to the county?
There's no cost to the schools, no cost to the county. What will happen, just to go through the billing reimbursement, is we would bill for that service, but we do not expect the school nurse or anybody to do anything. If we do not collect, we write it off.
And it's in every school in the county?
It will be in every school in the county, that's what we're planning to do.
So parastarses or they going to be the...
They would be considered the telepresenter. And what the school nurse can do for the point of care tests I was talking about, we have a standing order that walks through the clinical protocol of what to do and then the wait usually 15 minutes to see the results and then we start that telemedicine visit at that point.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the workload for our nurses, so yeah, that was my question.
And they'll be trained on this?
Yeah. So what we...
I appreciate your service.
I'm excited about it because I mean, there's limited healthcare here so we can hopefully help get additional care here.
I appreciate it.
And the other thing that this virtual urgent care visit will do is if they are attached to a pediatrician or a family medicine doc, whether it's a valid doc or not, we complete that continuum of care so that provider gets a copy of this clinical summary.
Do you have the question? I think it's now a great idea. Thank you, Doris.
Anyone else?
Well, y'all know, we want to just come to tell you all excitedly that last night the county came through with the rest of the money that we will be bringing Mark Brown here for sure in September on the 20th and 21st. So we have raised all the money that we need to get him here and we're excited. I've talked to him the other day, he's excited to come. Again, we're including the high schools and the middle schools. So this should be a really good event, we're excited and we know he'll make just as much of an impact this year as he did last year, so.
Did he come in every school?
He is, every school, yes sir. Yep.
Is this money that the supervisor used from the OCU and...
Yes, yes. Took a lot of work, it took, it took a lot of, yeah, we had to kind of beg for that, but you know, we asked for $6,000 and we didn't feel that was a lot of the OCU money, but you had to really jump through some hoops, but we also got in touch with Senator Pillion and he kind of gave us some direction and so we got it taken care of. So last night the county gave us the rest of what we needed, so we are excited. So September 20th, 21st, he'll be in the schools and on the 21st also, we'll be doing the community night where anybody in the community can come in here, it's free of charge.
Where's that going to be?
That, well, the town of Lebanon gave us a pretty good sized donation. They would like us to use the theater, well, let's just say if we get, if it's open.
Yeah.
I would really like to see us maybe not fit in there. There's only like 250 seats in there. I'd like to pack the house out because I know there's more seats in the middle school than what there is. So hopefully after last year, we get a lot more people that get interested and come out and see him because I'm telling you, he just makes such an impact and we really need this, more than what people realize. So we just hope that we get the support and the community to back us and to come on in and listen to him talk.
Well, I think, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for watching.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Can I put for any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Do you entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda? I make the motion. Thank you, Ms. Parsons.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Zachary, on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like some? Motion passes. Moving on to the approval, we have a regular monthly meeting on June 8th, 2023. Do you entertain a motion to postpone meetings?
I'll make that motion. Mr. Gibson?
Ms. Compton? I'll second. Thank you, Ms. Parsons, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now I'll send you to approve the minutes for special call meeting, which is June 27th, 25th.
I'll take that motion as well.
Aye. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like some? Motion passes. Now we'll go to the recognitions.
Okay. I would like to ask Ms. McCoy to come forward to help me with the recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker. Chairman, vice chairman, rest of the county school board members, I appreciate your time this afternoon. We do have several wonderful recognitions throughout our county and we're going to start with our valedictorians and we'll begin with Castlewood High School. And that honor goes to James Aiden Grizzle, parents Mark and Shelley Grizzle. So if they'll come forward with their principal, Mr. Sparks. Okay. You could be with us tonight. Mr. Sparks, would you like to say a few words about James Grizzle?
Well, and I kind of jokingly just said, I'd be surprised if he did come because he's such a quiet, confident young man and I know that kind of sounds weird. You know, he's got quiet confidence about himself where he just goes about his business and does his thing and he excels in everything that he does. Mr. Robertson and I made a joke a few years ago when we had a conversation with him that we kind of knew it was going to be something special and I was just telling Mr. Bush this outside because he was using words he didn't die off that 90% of adults, including myself, have no idea what they are. He's just a super great kid with quiet confidence and we're just really proud of him, we know he's got a bright future ahead and he'll do great things.
Okay, Dr. Hooker is presenting the picture of valedictorian and we have one of each from each school and they will hang in foyer upstairs for the next year. And Mr. Sparks, if you'll take that and maybe the newspaper, take a picture and you can just leave it outside, okay? And we also have smaller pictures to hang here in the wardroom. That's the bottom row we have finished of all the valedictorians.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our next valedictorian is from Honecker High School, Zane Harmon Johnson, parents and... Mr. Bush?
Well, members, we appreciate the opportunity to recognize Zane for being a valedictorian. You know, I really don't have the words to express about what I can say about Zane Harmon Johnson. Well, if you guys know or not, but he was a finalist for the Patty Thompson Award and if you would have read the article in the newspaper about Zane's life, you would know that this young man is truly something special. His parents worked in the county school system, loyal employees of the school system. Zane has won almost every award imaginable at Honecker High School. He's received numerous scholarships. He went to the Kansas University of Virginia on a full scholarship. He was one of our finalists in the state for the Harriet Bird Leadership Award. He won the state leadership award from the FBLA. I think one of the biggest accomplishments that Zane had was that his peers elected him as their vice president for four years. So that speaks well of this young man. You know, Zane, again, like Mr. Sparks says, is very quiet, he goes about his own business and does his own thing. But the thing that I can say probably about Zane that I admire the most is his empathy that he has for other people and his fellow students. He cares about people. He cares about people more than he does himself and that speaks volumes to me because he's truly a good person and I think that's his best characteristic. I totally wasn't supposed to dress that since I'm the principal.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Our next valedictorian is from Lebanon High School, Ellen Kathleen Sodders, parents Michael and Melissa Sodders, principal, Mr. Ryan Potts, if you'll come forward.
Mr. Potts?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on these young people. They are the future, they're the future of our society and people like Ellen are very special. The other principals talked about quiet confidence. I'm not sure that Ellen's as quiet, but she does have a confidence about herself. I taught Ellen years ago, she is an amazing young lady. Her writing is unbelievable, her acting skills are unbelievable as evidenced by her two state championships in forensics. She was also the lead in our one act play this year, four-year, five-year member of the band, excellent musician and a soccer player as well. You know, we're super proud of her in the high school, she's a great representative of our community and we couldn't, you know, I'm super happy for her, she's awesome. Thank you.
I had the pleasure of being Ellen's principal in the elementary school and to tell you her confidence as a second grader, she came to the office and wanted to meet with Dr. Hooker because she wanted something done about that playground. Congratulations.
Our next recognition goes to Castlewood High School State Track members. Our first recognition is Anna Summers. Our daughter Anna Summer, so if they'll come forward, I'll welcome them. Mr. Sparks, an answer, if it's here, okay. Mr. Sparks, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Ms. D and her husband are actually left to beat, so they're making their anniversary this week and she extends her congratulations, but this is so impressive. This is, first of all, Anna's a freshman and she's a state champion. You know, first and foremost, that goes and that says so much about her. I mean, you just turned 15 years old and she was 14 at the time and went to state championship, that's a phenomenal feat. But the most impressive thing to this is how much time Anna has to put into this individually on her own. Because Anna was also a member of our softball team and so most of the work and practice that went into this was done after softball practice and things was over and she did most of this individually on her own and that just, that just shows what kind of work ethic she has, her desire to be successful and it's just a true, just a true testament to her work ethic and her abilities and just say, hey, congratulations, fantastic job, we're really proud of you.
This is the name of Anna Summers, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning the 2023 VHSL Group 1A Discus Throw. She's a champion. Our next recognition goes to Adam Gibson, parents Jim and Bob Gibson.
Mr. Sparks?
Well, seems like every season, whether it's fall, winter, or spring, we're back with Adam and another recognition. And like I said, and that just goes to show his dedication to everything he does. And I'll just go ahead and start with this just because to me it's the biggest thing that he's doing not only for himself and for me and his parents and his country, is Adam is soon shipping off to the Marine Corps and...
Next month.
Next month, next Monday, next Monday, Adam is... But again, this is another one, like I jokingly said all the time, I would leave school to go home and I'd pass out as Adam was running or I would be coming in the mornings and Adam would be there at school and Adam would be running and then Bob shortly behind him on the bicycle chasing him. It's just a group effort for them and I say it all the time, I used to joke about it, I'd go up on the weekends or whatever and I'd be in the school working, I'd look out my office window and I'd see Adam coming by and again, here Bob would come back behind and, you know, it's just a great, again, testament to his work ethic, the type of person Adam is and Adam is a, is a true, truly great representative of Castlewood High School, our community and Russell County. Adam will make us all proud, I have no doubt. Thank you, Adam.
Adam has two awards. Adam Gibson, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning the 2023 VHSL 1A 3200 meters, second place. Adam Gibson in recognition of winning the 2023 VHSL 1A 1600 meters, fifth place.
Taking picture of that hair?
Yes.
Tell me, how's the running partner? Do you have a model on her?
Congratulations.
Our next recognition goes to Maddox Barnett, parents Dean and Heather Barnett, who come forward.
Again, another one, who Adam's running partner a lot of times I see together. Maddox is really, I'll say this about him in my own privacy, but Maddox, when I first got to know Maddox, was really quiet and kind of didn't talk a whole lot and didn't, you know, put himself out there for a while. In the last three years, the last two in particular, Maddox has really come out of his shell and he's just turned into a great person. His personality is dynamic, he's so charismatic and I mean, he just worked so hard and we know this standing here, that how hard, like he's worked so hard on his own, individually, he's up there freezing cold, I used to see him all the time, I'd go up over Christmas break and he's so cold and there he'd be running, running around the parking lot, through the parking lot and stuff. And again, it's just, just no testament to his desire to be successful, the type of person he is and the work ethic that he has and that man's, we just could be more proud of him than Castlewood, in all respects.
Maddox Barnett, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of the 2023 VHSL Group 1A 800 meters, sixth place. And our last recognition for Castlewood High School State Track is Madison Sutherland, parents Stephen and Helen Sutherland. On behalf of Madison, Mr. Sparks.
Thank you. I'll say this real quick about Madison as well. Madison was, she was a member of our softball team. They call her Rocket, they call her Rocket for a reason, I tell you, she can pick them up and put them down, but I don't know how many times I would pass her throughout Castlewood different times and she had hurdles in the back of the truck, you know, whether she was taking them home to set them up in the driveway or to Eastside to put them on the track or whatever the case may be. And again, like I said, it's just, it's just a true testament to these young people and their work ethic and their desire to be successful. Like I said, she's another one, she's a great representative of Castlewood High School and she's coming back, but she's, she'll do great things for us too and we're super proud of Madison as well.
Okay, our next recognition goes to the Russell County Career and Technical Center, Skills USA National Winners. And our first winner is Colton Barton, parent Ms. Ty Compton, if they'll come forward. Mr. Gilmer?
I'm going to let Colton hold this, I want you all to see this, this is what he's done.
He was on television, probably not. I watched him at six and I watched him at live. That's nice, that way to live.
Mr. Gilmer, would you like to say a few words?
I would. Colton here, we've been on tour the last few days, we had a turtle around, went to church and we had some good support from our church and went town hall last night. You getting tired of me talking about it or not? There's, I say the same old thing, you know, and I'm a big sports fan, I love the track and baseball and football and I'm a big pioneer fan and go to all the games, but you know, the things we do in our vocational school and that doesn't matter if there's one person in here or 10, I like to talk about. It's a great school, as you can see, we've got great students, their ability, but we don't go out on Friday nights and pack the stands, there's nobody in the crowd hollering for us or clapping for us or, and there's no ticker tape parade when we get home from a championship or when we're leaving to go to state. Colton not only finished first or second in the nation, he also, and you may have something for that, he finished first in the state, but he also finished first in the region, also finished first in our school. He has competed against his fears in our school. Last year he won first in the state, but he didn't win first in the region, won second, which may have been a good sign. He's like that movie Armageddon, Harry, Bruce Willis, listen, remember when Ben Affleck said, "Harry can do it, he doesn't know how to fail." Colton doesn't know how to fail. He saw what he needed to do, he worked on it for two years, he worked so hard all year, but he still had to do his normal competency.
but he still had to do his normal competencies, he had to spend time in the booth doing just what everybody else did. And I liked what Coach Sparks said about kids doing stuff on their own, that's what Colton did, he came in on some weekends, he dragged me in, and this is all about Colton, he did this, and he went against, there's no 1A, 2A, 3A, 4A, there's none of that. It's everybody's Skills USA in the United States, 50 states, and there's an average of 36 entries per state, that's 1,800 people he went against, something like that. So it's pretty impressive, you know, on U Center Five, the guy stood at the mic and said, "What's so impressive about this?" Well, that's not a good question, but Colton, you got tooties on the corner, but, whoop, whoop. You get a chance, look at that, we'd like to leave the school board off for a few weeks, maybe, so people can get a chance to look at it. Because you know, when you see it, I like for people to look, you know, you can handle it, it's fine, to look at the bottom and all around, it's just, there's no color added, no, it can't have, certain criteria, it has to be a certain size, can't have any paint on it. So all the color you see was developed by heat or welding process, you said several welding processes, and this is all Colton, he, just watching him, he taught me a lot. So he did a fantastic job, not only on this, but I mean, he played soccer and football. This right here is a stud, I'm telling you. He is, so whether that's politically correct or not, we're gonna miss him, we're gonna miss Mr. Gilmer, he's got his best sport. Anyway, I'm impressed. He does it all. All right, I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Rasnick?
I don't think there's anything else I can say. But he not only taught Mr. Gilmer something, but he taught me a lot of things too, because I was in there a lot of times, and I had no clue how that color was put in it until I was in there one day, and he was doing it. And you know, it just blew my mind to see him do that, and get it just like he, he wanted it. And he's, he's a hard worker, and he spent a lot of time on that, but he had that desire and that effort he put forth, and you know, I'm real proud of it.
One more thing, Dr. Sparks, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There is one thing I'd like to add, because Mr. Rasnick, Mr. Morland, it's not, it wasn't cheap for us to go to nationals, and I got to go, I just hold on to Colton's shirttail, you know, but I got to go, and the county paid for me, Mr. Morland came up with us some money, Colton did fundraisers, Mr. Rasnick came up with some money, and I want to thank all y'all for sending Colton, and we'll talk about him when he comes up here, but thank you, thank y'all so much for doing it.
Presented to Colton Barton, Russell County Career and Technology Center by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning second place, National Skills USA Welding Sculpture. Okay, our next recognition, also from the Russell County Career and Technical Center, Skills USA National Winner, Booker Steffie, parents Sarah and Keith Steffie, who come forward. Mr. Gilmer?
I'm sure Mr. Rasnick probably won't say it, but right here's another stud from Russell County Career and Technology. Booker's just a freshman, I really didn't know Booker until we went to Atlantis for a national competition, found out he was just a freshman, and, which is impressive on its own, got to watch Booker work. When we go to nationals, it's a full week, they have interviews, they have meetings, debriefing, they look at the prints, he's a mason, he was in the masonry competition, and then the day of the competition, it's a seven hour competition, you go, you go for a day's work. And I spent quite a bit of time watching him, and I was just blown away at his work. He, he had to build a wall, and he's competing against 30 other, 38 other states, so they're all laid out in this huge building, and they're doing their thing, and I'm sure he could help from just looking over the, the people around him, and see how fast they're going and stuff, but I was like, man, he's gonna win this thing, he's gonna win this thing. But he didn't win it, but he did place very high, and I was just so proud to be with them on this trip, and just watching him work, and I think Booker's planning on going back next year, but anyway, I just want to say how proud I am of him and Colton, that was a good team, I'm glad we got to go together, how they represented Russell County, Lebanon, and the vocations.
I've known Booker's parents here for many years. First, I guess, taught them in school, but first time I got to, I had met him before, but the first time I got to, to really know him, I guess, about three weeks after school started, I was going through the shops one day, and I saw this wall, and I can't, you know, tell you much about masonry, can't do it at all, but it caught my eye, and I went over and asked Mr. Brooks, I said, "Which one of your evening student, or morning students done this?" And he said, "Oh, no," he said, "he did it," and he brought him over there, and I mean, I was amazed. So I knew right then from early on that we had something to look forward to when he went to the state. And so, and it is a great honor to be a ninth grader, to be able to state a win, and I'm so proud of him, and we're looking forward for him to go and win again next year.
Presented to Booker Steffie, Russell County Career and Technical Center by the Russell County School Board in recognition of sixth place, National Skills USA Masonry. Yes, congratulations. Our last two awards are very special. We recognize our Teachers of the Month and our Employees of the Month throughout the school year, and from those winners, Teacher of the Year and an Employee of the Year is chosen. And this year's Teacher of the Month, or sorry, Teacher of the Year is Ms. Beth Marshall from Castlewood High School, and she could not be with us, so Mr. Sparks is gonna accept her award on, on her behalf. And I would like to read her nomination. During her tenure as an educator, Ms. Marshall has received numerous awards, honors, and recognition. Russell County Public Schools Teacher of the Month should undoubtedly, and here, be her next. Ms. Marshall is a dedicated professional and a pillar of our social studies department at Castlewood High School. She is also dedicated to the after-school program, conducting sessions multiple times a week for our students. Additionally, Ms. Marshall sponsors the MTA, which gives students the opportunity to take an active role in the understanding of the innermost workings of our government. She is an advocate of good citizenship, patriotism, and social awareness. She conveys the importance of voting, not just to our government students, but all students, by conducting school by month elections each cycle, and reporting on the results. She builds relationships with our students and celebrates their victories both inside her classroom and out. Our students look to her for guidance, comfort, and coffee as she is their resident barista. Ms. Marshall is also a member of the local chapter of Delta Kappa Gamma, which raises thousands of dollars annually in scholarship monies for young women in Russell County who plan to pursue a degree and career in education. Her love for the Magruder's textbook is as keen as her fashion sense, and her quick wit is hilarious as it is charming. She is a beloved member of the faculty and is tremendously worthy of this accomplishment. Mr. Sparks, would you like to say a few words?
I just wanted to say that Dr. Booker, a member of the board, Beth had prior engagements, she couldn't leave here, but she wanted me to extend a thank you for this honor. And for you guys that know Beth, this means so much to her, because she is such an advocate for education, and this, this means a lot to Beth Marshall, and I want to thank you guys for that, and she does too, and there's nothing more you can add other than what's written there, except, I'll say this again, the same thing that I said about her earlier when it was Teacher of the Month, for me personally, the things that Beth does for me, those, she's the first, every time, to volunteer to take up money for ballgames, and anybody who's been there knows what, what that's like. And I mean, she's always the first to volunteer, to do anything you ask, or anything you need, and she's just, honestly, she's just the light in our day, and this is just, this truly is an honor, and I just want to thank you guys for that, on behalf of myself, Castlewood High School, our students, our community, and Beth Marshall. Thank you, guys.
Our last recognition, but certainly not the least, goes to the Employee of the Year, Mr. Chris Marshall from Lebanon High School, and, I'm sorry, Chris Music from Lebanon High School, and the Principal, Mr. Ryan Hawes, who come forward. I want to read his nomination letter. Chris Music is a very hardworking individual who takes tremendous pride in keeping our school looking at its best. He is always available when we need him to take care of some custodial task, and he always does it with a smile. I never hear him complain or grumble about the work that he's asked to do. He works long hours taking care of the building when we have sporting events, academic events, et cetera. I know that there was one evening recently, that the snow got extremely heavy after a ballgame, and he stayed to clean up the gym so that we would be ready for the next day, and he got stranded at the school. He spent the night in the school and was ready to take on the next day without any complaining. Chris has been assuming the responsibility of three custodial staff that has lauded first building because of various staffing issues, but he continues to take it all in stride. Chris deserves recognition for his hard work and tremendous dedication to Lebanon High School and Russell County Public Schools. Mr. Potts?
I don't know what we'd do without this guy right here. As stated eloquently in the letter, he has, he has been the rock of our school. We've had custodians come and go, those of you that have been there know, it's hard, it's a hard job. We have a big school.
Three acres under red, right?
Yes, we have a big school, and he manages to keep it looking good. We, we hosted the region tournament this year, we were requested to host the region tournament this year because of our facility, and we get compliments from everyone about what our facility looks like, and it has to do with Chris. He, he does it all for us, and he does it with a smile, I think that's the other thing, and that's what it says in the letter. You know, there's a lot of employees that, that sometimes when people call out, when we have staffing problems, it's a hard thing, and they, it's easy to be negative, and he's not, he's never negative, he always answers every time I call him, or call him on the radio, he probably hates that radio, but he, he does a wonderful job, and we're so lucky to have him. Thank you for recognizing him, because it's, it's a very important thing, and we appreciate that.
Presented to Chris Music, Lebanon High School by the Russell County School Board in recognition of being selected as the 2022-2023 Support Employee of the Year.
Consent agenda. Of course, if the approval of the bills and the council meeting before we have an opportunity to review the bill.
Motion to approve.
Bill, Mr. Boston, this is your second. Thank you, Mr. Parsons, all in favor, say aye. Any votes, aye. Okay, moving on, with approval of recognitions and retirement, short list.
Do you make a motion?
No, no, somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Boston.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Boston, with your all in favor, approving the recognition and retirement. I'll oppose, motion passes. Next would be the new hires. Now, next approval of aisle personnel in Russell County, if we have an opportunity to review that list, and that motion will approve, approve such. Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Mr. Parkin, all in favor, say aye. Any votes? Next is the approval of new personnel and transfers.
So, Mr. Turner.
Right, sir, second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Boston, all in favor, the new hires, the transfers, say aye. Any votes, aye, aye. Our motion passes. Our top visitor, action item.
Yes, sir, we have one action item for tonight. The Virginia Department of Education requires school boards to review and approve the crisis plans for the schools in their division. The staff is requesting approval as submitted.
If each former member had an opportunity to review this?
I'll make your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Thank you, Mr. Boston, all in favor, approving the school's crisis plans, say aye.
Okay, we do have one information item for tonight. As a member of the VSB, Russell County Public Schools periodically receives VSB policy updates to be examined by our school board members for implementation in the Russell County Public Schools Policy Manual. The policies under consideration can be seen under the Policies tab on board docs. The staff is requesting feedback and direction as we move forward on this item.
Those are listed currently, correct?
Yes.
Will that get up next month?
Yes.
Time to review that? Can that should be, there are sales tax? For the month of June 2023, $414,099.84. Our ADM through May 31st, 2023, was $3,119. We have a major report throughout the county, so if we have an opportunity to review that, you can expand it and report, if you have any questions about any of those reports. Moving on to future agenda items.
The only thing I would like to add is to tell everyone that our three-year-old prepay program has gotten approved for this coming year. The Castlewood area will go to Copper Creek Elementary School, the Humaker area, Sword Street, will go to Humaker Elementary School, and the Lebanon area will go to Lebanon Primary School. School.
That's good news. That's good news. And that will start this school year?
Yes, it will, start in August.
And I'd like to thank Miss Street, I think she wrote that.
Yes, she did.
Yes. Thank, thank, thank Mr. Chris.
She's a professional developer this week.
Future calendar items, Dr. Booker?
We have one, the 2023 VSBA Annual Convention has been dated from November the 15th through the 17th of 2023.
Okay, can we?
Yes, yes.
What would you say is date of what?
November the 15th through the 17th.
Okay, the date of the next school board meeting will be August the 3rd, 2023. Executive session starts at 5:00, the regular meeting at 6:30. Want to thank Castlewood Elementary for providing a meal tonight, and we'll keep Mr. Ball and his family in our prayers. Any of the board members have anything on their mind, or?
I'm gonna push with yours.
Okay, is there a second?
Thank you.
Ms. Garrett, all in favor, retirement, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Say your base sentence.